They're, they're, um, they're calling. Um, you know, the 25 percent, I think it's an arbitrary number. Um, I'm not crazy about that. I don't know, I don't know what the answer is to that. I think the tenure law though, is a law that has passed its prime.
Other comments? We appreciate the comments that were made tonight, uh, by you all and, uh, and the comments that were made by your applause. I mean, we hear that as a board, and I think it's safe for me to say representative of the total board, is that we support teachers. I think how we go about showing that support may differ among some of us individually. And I think that when we debate the idea of going outside the boundaries of the law to make a statement, that becomes a, a major, uh, discussion for us, uh, as a board because that, that then reflects on how we do business in other areas too, where we have laws that are unpopular. So I think that we need to take this step with, uh, quite a bit of caution and trepidation and, and look and seriously consider what the implications of that might be, not only for the teachers presently regarding this issue, but what the implications may be for our system down the road and, and the, uh, reactions that may be had in other decisions a general assembly makes. I don't mean to sound that, you know, we could be intimidated by them, but I think there are just a lot of, uh, of different directions this, a decision like this can take. So we want to make sure that as much as we can predict outcomes is that we don't set ourselves up in an attempt to help teachers wind up hurting them, uh, more in other areas. So, uh, I appreciate if you will be patient with us a little bit longer and let us have some discussion, uh, after we've had time to reflect, uh, on the comments. We, we deeply appreciate the comments that were made and I think respectfully understand and accept the, uh, the concerns that all the board members brought up. So we, again, we thank you. Let's move on then to, uh, the item C, the Filewave and Destiny Asset Manager Contracts. Uh, Dr. Blatner.
This is a voting item again.
Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. Uh, this is, um, two contracts I'm bringing before you today that I brought before you at the committee of the whole and we had discussion on. The first one is Filewave. It is a, it is a contract to, for a program that can go on all of our computers. This, one issue that we are having as we move more to a mobile environment, both with our lap, teacher laptops, uh, that we're, our demands on our technology department to try to install pro, printers, to fix those items and to install other programs that might be on there, it becomes much more difficult, uh, to try to coordinate having all the pieces in place at one time. It also requires us sometimes to take devices out of circulation to reimage them, which is our current, uh, way of doing things. Uh, the Filewave product does, uh, several things for us. One, it allows us, no matter if it's a Windows device or, um, uh, an Apple device, it allows us to push and pull programs, which is unique to this, uh, program. Uh, so if they, like one request we get when, uh, Office 2013 is out now, uh, this, the teachers may want to have Office 2013 on their computers, we can push that out to a school rather than right now having to collect them all up, reimage them and turn them back out to the teachers. It also allows us to remotely, uh, control the desktops and laptops so that if there are issues that maybe, uh, one of our technicians is not at that school, but is an easy fix, they can remote in and fix those, um, those devices there. Uh, it also allows, it has what's called a self-serving kiosk, service kiosk. So when we have software that's approved by the school system, it can be in a spot that a teacher can go get and pull it down and not have to have it all on the computers all the time. This, um, this, this contract is for a site license, which means we can use it on as many machines as we buy or have. Uh, currently it, uh, the, the initial cost is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars per year. That includes ten thousand dollars in training, uh, for the setup and training, and then it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year after that. Uh, to put it in a little bit in perspective, that's about a little over four dollars per machine that we have here in Iredelle-Statesville schools. Um, and that allows us to really reach the, uh, reach the classroom level, cause the labs that we have right now, let's take the state testing we just went through on the mid-year. There were, the state put a secure web browser out that they needed to have on every one of the machines that was going to be taking this test. Uh, took three of my technicians, three weeks rotating between the high schools to get that onto the high school computers. Where a program like this, we could have loaded it up into, uh, the program, hit send, and it would have gone out to those computers. It updates them for the mobile devices, both in the network and also when they go at home. It points to the web, so it, um, it allows for that. It's, it allows what's called self-healing, which means if they mess something up and it's in our Filewave, the Filewave will kind of just repair that next time they reboot. And if it interrupts downloads, that's another thing, a lot of the things I've saw, if it interrupts downloads when they close it, it just resumes it right when it gets off instead of giving an error saying that it, uh, something went wrong. And this all happens behind the scenes and the, the user doesn't even know that's going on. So it really does not disrupt their service as they're going on. Do you want me to go out, would you like me to go to the second contract or ask, answer questions on that first one?
Let me go ahead and present the second one.
Sure. The second contract is, uh, the Destiny Asset Manager. Uh, it's made by Follett. Follett is the same, uh, company that does our card catalog library, uh, management system. This is an addition on to that system and what this system allows us to do is to use our current checking and checkout system, scanners, all of our current hardware that we have to then also track all sorts of, all the devices, anything that we put a barcode on, we can track where the, um, where laptops are, where our switches are, anything that we purchased and we want to scan, we can do that. It allows us the database, right now we use spreadsheets and keep track of things. This allows it all to be in one spot and we can check it out to people, check it out to schools. So when our media specialists at the end of the year need to run their reports, the AMTR report and this, this state report, it allows a source where we can gather some of that information so that we can give that information out easier. It allows it for, when we have, um, we found with the teacher devices, when we're swapping teacher device, when they give them a loaner, it allows us to check, check in the loaner, check out the loaner much easier than having, when you have 15 people working on one spreadsheet, things can get missed or miscued on there and makes it much cleaner and a much more secure system. This contract has, um, is a seventy-four thousand dollar initial contract that includes training for the media specialist and the district office as well as setup. And then it's, the renewal for that is fifteen thousand dollars a year, and that would be for all the schools in the school systems. That spread, uh, for the, be about initially about two thousand dollars per school and the renewal will be, um, I mean, about five hundred a year per school for that. And that is the Destiny Asset Manager system.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Blatner?
Dr. Blatner, did you, uh, do a return on investment study, just the figures you gave about those three weeks and taking all that time to go fix these computers for testing? That plus the other factors you mentioned, did you see if there was a potential cost savings or was it a break even or?
I started doing that and there was a cost savings pretty much as I just started going into that, just the ability, cause we have no way of pushing out fixes to machines at this point in time. And the amount of time that takes, plus not even, I couldn't put a dollar amount on when I had to take, when we did the, the labs, we had to do the phys, uh, remote labs as well. So it was about one or two days, we had to take those labs out of production, it's, students couldn't use them. So when you add that in there, uh, there, but it, there is definitely return on investment. I don't have the exact figures on that, but, uh, what I found, um, when doing it, it, it allows our 14 technicians that we have on these 30,000 devices we're about to have to be able to have 14 technicians actually service 30,000 devices.
Other questions or comments?
I just, I'm not comfortable with these things coming back to us now that we've got the commitment on the devices and, and, uh, I just, I just think it needs to be understood that a commitment to or support of technology does not equate to a rubber stamp. And I think we're gonna have to draw the line on spending and spending and spending and upgrades and upgrades and upgrades when we're in an environment of letting people go. I mean, I know there are two different issues, but every dollar is going in the same bucket. And I just think that, uh, we, we need to be mindful of, yes, we have a commitment to tech, technology, but there are lots of other things that we have a commitment to as well, and we can't come back every year with upgrades and upgrades and rubber stamps and hundred thousand dollar contracts and, so I, I just hope it's not a snowball.
Is, uh, is either one of these contracts included in the original grant?
Not specifically, no.
Any part of it?
This was, uh, it, these are not, um, programs that we need specifically for the grant, although the grant makes it more necessary. Uh, these are tools that we would need regardless of having those, uh, devices, but specifically in it is not, uh, in the grant, no.
So I, you know, I'm voicing the same concern to Mr.
Yeah.
Braden concern, uh, as stated already, uh, we got into a system and we're on the line in reference to technology and we all understand that. But again, you know, I would, I would take one step further than what he's saying. He said, okay, is that all? Am I gonna have to have red wheels or am I gonna have covers or am I gonna have to have little carts for all these things? I've come back now with backpacks and now I'm coming back with a way to track them. I've come back with a, a system by which I can, uh, not insure them, but cover them. And all those that were added after we went stepped into the idea of the mass idea of technology and the computer per. And, I mean, I would almost scream, is that all? I mean, like he says, is it gonna be next year, another hundred thousand or another 20,000 or is that pretty much it? And is there really and truly money for the things that we're talking about here? You know, we can say we want this and this is good and we have to have this, but there also has to be a way to cover it. And there's an initial, plus I just love that per year. You know, per year means this time next year, we sit and talk about, uh, renewing these two things to cover what's, what's there. So again, is that all? I mean, I know there's not a magic crystal ball, but are you foreseeing anything else that we have to have to run this system?
I've tried to present to you everything that I can think of, um, that were coming. I know that, uh, we, there are surprises that we have and I don't, you don't like surprises and I don't either. Um, I, I see that, um, we've been committing money to upgrade the infrastructure, working within the budget that we have. And, uh, as we move into this, I'm not saying that there wouldn't necessarily be something infrastructure-wise we'd have to bring forward, but there's nothing when we sit down to think of that we can immediately put our hands on saying this is what we need to, uh, that, another big ticket item that will be coming forward.
Just leaves a bad taste in my mouth. I don't, I, the, the grant suddenly is costing us money. There's a disconnect.
Well, what I see is we, we are breaking new ground, you know, with these, with these computers. You know, I look at these two, um, systems that you're, that, that you've proposed to us and, um, yeah, they're gonna cost us money. I see them in effect though, saving us money. We have 14 technicians. We need a way to track, we've got, you know, 30,000, how many students?
Twenty-one thousand students.
Twenty-one thousand students, you know, um, how do we, how do we order, um, computers? Do we, you know, how do you make sure that you're not over ordering? And I think this is, you know, it's probably a very needed thing and I think it will save us money. It's just, you know, it's like, you know, my colleagues here have said, you know, having to dole out the money at the, at the very beginning, it hurts a lot, but I, I can see, you know, where it's gonna, where it's gonna help us, but, um, owie.
I like that word, zowie.
By doing a better system, you said mobile, is that gonna reduce technicians? I mean, you're gonna be able to do more with less, it sounds like.
It would reduce the, it would delay the need for technicians immediately, cause if we don't do something like this, I'll need to have technicians to be able to actually administer this on a timely basis out there. Um, but it does not reduce the number of technicians we need at this point in time.
Does the grant include any technician? Didn't the grant include some technicians?
And they're currently on our staff. There's four technicians that were included in the grant that are, that have been hired and doing the job, uh, at the schools.
We did have quite a discussion about this last week in our committee of the whole and we felt it was important to discuss this again here in this meeting, in this venue. I think we all have concerns about money that's spent anywhere, but especially with our technology program, but at the same time, we realize we have taken a whole new direction in education by implementing this system. And I think we do understand and want the public to understand, this is a need that doesn't come just because of the, uh, impact grant, uh, that we purchased the computers for the students. We have hundreds of computers already within the system that need to be upgraded and need to be kept online, repairs, patches and, and these other things that I'm, it's beyond my knowledge, but I know that we have needed that just because of our IT part to start with. So, uh, I think it came at a time when we, that may be leading to misunderstanding with the, the other computers, but, but I think it's, we, I think our message is just to be cognizant of the money and realize that we are under a lot of budget constraints and different members of the public have different ideas on how we should spend that money and we're just trying to appease everybody and ultimately make sure that we're doing the best for the students, that, that we prepare ourselves and set ourselves up so that the students and the teachers that teach them are, are, uh, set in play. I mean, the last thing we want is a lot of computers that are not working correctly. So I think this helps ensure that we will have properly operating equipment.
It does.
With that in mind, if there are no other comments, uh?
Well, I'll make one other, you know, get me wrong on the wrong side or anything because we're already doing this somewhat. We deal, not somewhat, we're working toward doing it in all of our schools in reference to our HVAC systems. You know, we can, we know what's going on in especially the newer systems by a computer sitting in an office that's 14 miles away or in an automobile that's on the way to the site. So I'm assuming this is somewhat the same thing. I can go somewhere, computer-wise, and find out where all those computers are, whether or not they're still working, whether or not I need to send a technician out to look at them. I can understand that. I just, like we've said, I just get to that point in which I want to say, okay, fine, that's enough, that's, I, I don't want to hear about anything else that we have to add to what we have spent a fortune on in reference to the system. And it is a system.
Dr. Blatner, this system you're asking, if I understand it correctly, it's not just to be able to do the remote updates, but it's also a work, work order management system, like you described, to get it off of spreadsheets, to get it where you can understand?
Uh, we have two systems here. The second one is, it's not a work order management so much as an asset manager.
Okay.
And then, um, the first one is, um, not just to deploy, um, it's supposed to do, if we wanted to move to a help desk, which is one thing we're explore, exploring now, instead of having technicians at schools and have to travel in between moving to a help desk environment, this would also allow us to do that by having the tools already in place that we'd be able to do that. So it allows remote help assistance where we don't have that ability at this point in time.
Do we have a motion to approve these two requests?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I, I don't like spending this kind of money more than anybody when we're laying people off, but if we're gonna, if we have already as a board made the decision to support mobile computing, if you don't do this, it's gonna be a conglomeration and you're gonna have no idea where things are at. And it's gonna end up costing more money. He's gonna have to hire more technicians if we don't do this. So, you know, it's that battle in my mind, do I want to spend more money now or spend more later? But, uh, I, I think we've gotta do it.
All right, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
We'll move to the next item, uh, item D, the heat recommendations for impact.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, as we discussed in, um, great detail at, last week at the Cal meeting, we are bringing forth, um, the recommendations for a vote from the board tonight for our highly effective educators proposal for our pilot sites. And so with that, I want to remind you again that this is different. While we were gonna talk about some criteria that may sound like Senate Bill 402, this is very different from Senate Bill 402. And so we're gonna talk to you about those distinctions and what we have as part of the impact grant in preparation for these pilot schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ethan Todd, our executive director for human resources.
Before you start, Mr. Todd, I'd want to comment to the public on behalf of Mr. Rogers and possibly Mr. Johnson shortly, they have another commitment. We've had an unusual situation tonight where the good news banquet is being held over at the Civic Center and these two gentlemen have been asked to speak over there and they asked to be the last possible position on the agenda tonight, uh, so that they would be able to be here and we thought this meeting might move a little faster than it has. So, uh, they're not leaving because of being upset or mad, but they've got a previous speaking engagement, so we'll excuse them if they need to go.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. And one other thing too, when we finished this presentation on heat, uh, yesterday you directed us to, uh, take a look at the school calendar again for the day that we missed last Friday. And so we did that today with the staff and Dr. Hargrave, if, if you will present that recommendation from the, from the cabinet in just a few minutes. And, uh, forgive me for leaving, if, if you need for Dr. Hargrave to come up here and sit in this chair, he's, he's more than qualified to do that. But we told him we'd be there at eight o'clock to make some remarks, so we're gonna scoot out the door if that's okay.
Thank you. Ms. Todd?
Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson, uh, with that in mind, I'll be brief but thorough. Uh, tonight I'm excited to bring to you once again, uh, the highly effective educators team proposal for project number two, goal number three of our impact grant. And we're excited to bring this work to you. In a nutshell, um, this is a work that is comprised of a team of folks to include but not limited to teacher representation across our system. So tonight I'd like to talk about what are the expectations of this project? Look at pilot schools for this project. Impact teacher, define that for you. Talk about what a supplement or stipend might look like for this. And finally wrap it up with timeline. So there are outcomes that we are focused on with this project and that is to cultivate high quality educators by value, elevating teacher and leader effectiveness and expanding student access to excellent teachers. Basically looking at excellent teachers and having them touch the lives of as many students as we can with the idea on them, uh, reaching premium effectiveness with them. We do and have identified two pilot schools to start this work in. Again, I want to stress, these are pilot, this is a pilot project and we looked at two schools, West Iredelle Middle and Statesville Middle School. The future focus however, is not only to learn from this pilot program, but implement improvements that we've learned in this pilot program and expand to other schools in our system. Here, this next slide is again surrounded by caution tape. This looks v- very familiar to Senate Bill 402, but the, the implications in the way we're using this data is very different. So how do we select those teachers that come, uh, to be considered for the pilot schools for these positions? The team looked at lots of criteria and ranking those criteria, but they felt the following criteria were important to consider. And not any one in isolation, keep in mind. Teacher evaluation, value-add data, which is EVA's. Practices affecting positive change, we've heard some conversation about the collaborative spirit and collaboration of teachers, that is what we're getting at there. Leadership capacity, certificate and licensure of course, recommendation from their supervisor. Of course, we want somebody who has, uh, role model attendance, degrees, taking a look at that criterion and then years of service. So we have many classroom teachers in our system. What sets this job description apart from the typical classroom teacher job description? And this is on this slide titled impact teacher. And we're focused on core area. Demonstrates an ability to manage larger class sizes. That's getting into that, that focus of touching as many kids as we can. Personalized learning, which is a focal point of the impact grant for students by engaging of utilization of small focus groups and centers as best practice. Integration of those best practices in a consistent manner. Serve as a model impact classroom for their site, pilot site. Provide technology-enabled learning opportunities across the continuum to differentiate content and pacing and allow for different classroom configurations. The next slide talks about a stipend or a supplement that we would propose. There are no dollar amounts in here, but the idea is to have an initial trigger of recruitment dollars that we can offer that person that meets the basic criteria as outlined, fits the job description, is accepting of that work, participates in professional development activities that the team has prepared for them and evidences best practices in a consistent manner. Year two, what we're moving towards is away from behaviors and towards effectiveness, we'd consider strongly the effectiveness data that that teacher has netted, having worked with those students for a year. And we'd take a look at the EVA's value-add data set and we'd take a look at differentiating, supplement for meets basic growth or exceeds growth standards. Of course, we'd want to continue to evidence best practices and also take a look at community outreach behaviors. Year three, the trigger would include the previous year's triggers, but the added caveat of trend data now. We're looking at, are we trending up and are trending positively more effective with students or not? That is our hope is to be as effective as we can. And that arrow off to the right-hand side kind of gives you a picture of, of our movement from behaviors to behaviors and effectiveness with our students. So we have a timeline that we prepared, a short-term, spring 2014, based on your approval tonight, identify and place impact classroom teachers at pilot sites. Summer 2014, this summer, provide professional development. And throughout the year, next year, coach and support impact classroom teachers and utilize formative assessment data to monitor effectiveness.
So just for the last part of this, um, again, to point out the differences between this and Senate Bill 402 is just to remember that on the previous slide, I believe it was slide seven, actually, if we could go back to slide seven a minute, is notice the difference in the dollar signs. Part of this is a recruitment tool for those pilot sites. And so there is more incentives for teachers after they've been there for a period of time and had the opportunity to show great success and, and get used to a culture in a building, get used to their students, hone their skills. And so that's why you see the differences in the dollar amounts from year, from the initial trigger to that year three trigger. And so this is a very, when you're, you're combining the concept of behaviors and effectiveness as Mr. Todd alluded to, which is very different than just the one-time, one-shot, this is it, if you don't meet it at this mark, you never have another opportunity, that are some of those trends that we've some of those trends that we've talked about with Senate Bill 402. So it's very important, especially for the work at these two pilot sites, that that distinction is made. Okay? Are there any questions regarding that? We also do have Mr. Patrick Abele just to speak from the position of the grant, if you have any questions. He's here as a resource also. And I think we're ready for Slide 10.
Alvera, how does, if we're forced to swallow 402, how do they coexist?
They can very easily coexist because, remember, part of Senate Bill 402 is we have to make a decision this year that impacts the next four years. What we're talking about with this is ongoing work at these two pilot sites where we're in there. It involves professional development. It involves coaching. It involves a lot of other pieces of work. It's not a decision that's made today with no opportunity for change during the course from now till July 2018. So the two can coexist.
It's more of a process.
Yes.
If 402 went by the wayside, this could continue on.
This work would continue because it's different, yes.
A longer process.
This is a part of the IMPACT grant?
This is a part of the IMPACT grant.
So anytime you've got little dollar marks up there, you're talking about the IMPACT grant?
Not necessarily. One of the things that's a requirement as part of this grant is these incentives would be from other funding sources. And do you want to speak on that from a grant standpoint?
Thank you. I have had conversations with our program officer in reference to this. This is not a budgeted line item within the grant application or within the approved budget. However, what we've looked at is locally, looking at how you're currently paying or supplementing teachers as being a possible source being used. But moving forward, certainly, as we go through the grant years, if there's funding available within the grant, then I've let the program officer know with your approval, if there's funds that we could move or utilize to cover this portion, we would certainly bring forth that recommendation to be able to do that. But at this time, there's no funding tied to this portion of the grant.
To me, at this point, there are a couple of things that overlap, two or three. One, this is really, really, really bad timing in reference to what all is happening across the board. I mean, and then there's second bad timing is we're doing exactly the same thing that we did last week. This is at the end of the meeting. It's one of the last presentations, and everybody's concentration is not the same. And the connection between the head and you-know-what. So this, to me, excuse me, this to me is something we need to look at further than this evening. And we're doing the same thing again, which is last week, I saw it for the first time, and you're talking about a pilot starting in the spring of 2014. That's like now. And so, and then I, but I look at the other part of it, which is I look at those criteria that you have. They're not any of those criteria all our teachers are not already doing. I mean, just practically every one of them. We are working already on all the collaboration, all the work together, everything. So what does this add to anything that we're already in place working on?
Well, Mr. Kelly, I'd like to make a few distinctions. First of all, this is not new as part of the grant. When information regarding the grant was brought forth, this information regarding this incentive structure was part of the discussions with the grant. What's new is because of all that's going on, we actually asked for it to be delayed as part of the grant. And you can speak to that timeline. And so, now, from that delay, we're having to work to speed up because we said to our grant folks, they looked at, as part of our application, some of the work that we had done with the restructuring, if you remember us talking a few years ago, with the restructuring of Statesville Middle and some of those pieces, they looked at that and asked us to embed, you know, some of those pieces. And with all of the things that were coming on, we asked for that delay. And now, it's time for us to work based on that timeline.
Well, there are two things before you respond to that. One is Statesville Middle is not where it was three years ago to start with.
Exactly.
And then I see that other word up there that I've just drawn, sustain. That to me is the same thing that I had over here, per year. And when I get to 2016 and somebody says to sustain this, we have to do so-and-so, so-and-so, I don't know what that is.
The sustain part is not sustaining the incentives. The sustain part is sustaining the success that we're looking to get from the implementation of what's going on as far as student performance.
Uh-huh. Right.
So I think you have to look at that because the idea of the pilot, and I'm not the grant expert, but as far as the discussion with the team, you know, you have to be aware that those are ongoing discussions with that team. That includes teachers, principals, it's a collaborative team from across the district.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this stuff we're dealing with already. You know, I'm reminded of the classifications in reference to degrees and what the BS stands for and what the MS stands for and what the PhD stands for. This looks like a PhD. And so, I don't know how it stands any different than anything else that we are going to implement anywhere.
Well, I think one thing you have to think about, even for the schools that are involved in these pilots, we have master's pay that's going away, that our state is saying teachers should not get paid for master's pay. When you see advanced degrees and that, that says that in this school, for the work with these students, that master's degree is worth something. And so, I use that as just one example, again, to make the distinction, to say this is not the same as Senate Bill 402. And that's why we have to continue to work on making that because that's just one example out of all that criteria.
But I go back to my original statement, this is bad timing.
Well, and if you remember, part of the beginning of my presentation last week is the timing of this is really bad. And that's why we think that the communication, the work at these school sites is extremely important. Because now, as part of the grant, we can't delay that work. We've already delayed that work. And so, we've got to, it's time for us to pay up on what our commitment is. And so, that's why that communication piece with these schools is so important.
Let me make sure.
It's grant money. It's grant money, not.
And even with regards to the incentives, we have to talk about additional structures such as Title II, supplements, and different things like that with regards to how we make this incentive structure work with that.
So this is part of the grant and it's a requirement of the grant, but the grant does not fund it, is that correct?
All of it.
Does not fund it.
Yeah.
And we don't know what it's going to cost.
Well, we're working on that structure, and that's part of what the federal government is asking.
Okay, I want to make a suggestion, until we know what it's going to cost, that we delay a vote because without knowing a cost, I can't in good conscience vote for it. I think it's a good plan, don't get me wrong. It's a laudable goal, but without knowing a cost, there's no way.
One, I think you have to speak to the requirement.
Let me talk, if I can, Dr. Cash and members of the board, just quickly on the requirements of the grant. This was a major component of the grant as far as a contingency that was placed on the grant by the federal government. When our approved scope of work was approved in early fall, it was contingent upon coming back with this plan and having this plan presented for our strategic staffing structure. Certainly, as far as we mentioned, there's no current budget within the grant to cover that. Doesn't mean then in the future that we cannot ask for an amendment to do that. In fact, the letter that came back with our scope of work and reminders about what was contingent, this being one of those, says the grantee will make final determinations based on need and budget. So it's recognized that this board is in a position of putting forth a plan that will need to meet both current and future budgets as well. We did ask that this be delayed because year one of the grant started January 1, 2013. And we knew when we came onboard and we were rolling out the initiative in the fall, that there was absolutely no way for us to present this or move forward of this at the same time that 402 had come out. And we asked the federal government to allow us the 13, 14 school year to do the planning cycle, the planning phases, in order to put this in place starting in the fall at the first pilot site. So coming back before you, we're certainly bringing back you the plan, which would allow us to move forward. But right now, I mean, it is, you know, expected of us to bring a plan forward. And we did ask, even though we presented it last week, that we bring it back because we felt it was important to have your approval so that we could continue the work in order to start what that would look like at those pilot sites moving forward. But I did want to just preference that, you know, our entire work with the grant had one contingency placed upon it, and it was us presenting back this plan. And I do think the reason for that, as mentioned earlier, this is a great school district. We have many wonderful opportunities and things that are happening every day in our schools. I think the federal government recognizes that. And this is a spotlight area, and as I said last week in the committee, if there's a district that can get this right, I believe Iredell, Statesville schools can do it. And so, you know, they're expecting us to put a plan forward that hopefully and possibly could be used as a model for other districts.
I've got one question as well. When we had our discussion last week and then again yesterday regarding budget, potential cuts, potential needs to present to the commissioners, you know, this coming Friday, we've got a lot of deadlines coming up that we've got to meet. Where in that particular budget, I know we talked about cuts, but I mean, this does seem a little bit like a surprise. Not the issue of the plan necessarily, but where the money would come from. I think we were all thinking that that was part of the grant budget as well. And if it's not, does money have to be included in this plan since we really have none? And if we do have some, where, I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
You're not putting us on the spot. We have already visited that plan, and even in the most recent budget meetings and budget presentations, we brought forth HEAT for that until said time, that we could work on an amendment, quite honestly, based on our projections. And we are limited into how we can project this. All we can use is what has been done in the past. We, in the budget that was presented, looked at $10,000 for an initial year. And that was the amount. And we discussed, we are working, we have not finalized those plans, but we are working on discussing potential funding sources to include but not limited to Title II, which is another federal funding source. And so, I think that if you want more detail, I'd be glad to get that to you. But we've already made those tentative plans as far as looking at several different budgets for that initial year based on past performance at the two schools involved. And then, from that point on, that will provide us with the data that we need to work with Mr. Abele to get that built into the actual IMPACT grant itself. Once we get, which is another thing to remember, the initial parts of this grant, you have the computers, you have all of that stuff in there. Once we begin to keep that moving, it creates more opportunities for that.
So if I understand what you're saying, we're looking at potentially $10,000 this first year.
Yes.
So that helps me.
Yes.
And I think it helps most of us to realize, we didn't know if we're talking about $10,000 or $110,000.
Right.
So in terms of what you had expected.
And also, to address Mr. Shoemaker's question, the reason you see dollar signs and you don't see specific amounts, because as we get more granular with, this is the budget for these incentives, then we have to base what we can spend off that budget. It's not like it's going to be this dollar amount and it's just expansive. We have to be able to narrow down what is the pool of funds that we have to work with and then how does that fit into that structure.
What about if we do this? We can approve the plan.
And that's all they're asking for.
And that's what you're asking for. And make it in the motion that we're not approving any money for it. We're approving the plan as is, and they will have to come back to approve any funding to go along with the plan. I'm okay with that.
What the feds are looking for is basically your support of that structure for those pilot sites.
I think more we've talked through this, and I appreciate that, and the more I understand it, I would be fine with that. But need to stipulate that though funding's been approved, we're approving the plan.
Well, I could, go ahead. I could make that statement, too. Okay, we can approve this plan, but if I hear anybody coming back for money, I'm going to throw something because this is really.
I will move out of the way.
This is really getting, this is really getting nitty-gritty. I can tell you something else, too. There's a commercial, remind you, there's a commercial on TV. Nobody in the world gets madder than a 19-year-old Marine with an M14, okay? I can't imagine anybody any more upset than a teacher who has been told that if they do X, Y, Z, Q, Y, and W, that they're going to get such and such a stipend, and that stipend is not there. Now, I don't want to be in the same room with that teacher either.
Well, and Mr. Kelly, that is why in our work as part of this grant, that's why we've got to get this plan approved so we can get the dollar amounts assigned to it, finish our processes, and be able to clearly communicate that. Because once we communicate this to teachers, it is that commitment.
I understand.
And we've got to be able to have that in stone and have the funding source for it.
That's right. In this conversation about 13 minutes ago, we could have voted to have passed this plan knowing nothing about the money. Only conversation brought out that there was any money connected to this at all, $10,000, $11,000, $100,000, whatever, we don't know. And as Mr. Shoemaker says, yeah, we can pass this plan, but if you come back for money, you're going to have trouble. So that's the reason, I think, okay, I understand you're up against a timeline in reference to the spring, but April is also the spring. Could you bring this back again next month?
It's going to be back next month and probably again in May.
Well, you bring it back next month and show where something that might come up that's not in the grant that might cost money so that we'll know ahead of time what it is. The pigs and the pokes are really getting heavy. So, and then when this comes up, I'm thinking the same thing. I'm thinking, whoop, 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 here we go again. I don't want to do that, okay? I mean, I'm not against this plan. Well, in a way, because this looks like the same thing that every teacher in our system is doing right now. So how are you going to differentiate one teacher from the other in reference to a particular plan? I don't understand.
Well, and I do believe that's some of the details, that as you see the work of the committee come forth in chunks, you're going to see the definition behind those behaviors as they move across that continuum to expectations.
I've heard that somewhere before, the devil's in the detail, is that what we're thinking?
Well, I think that the devil is in the details, but for this purpose right now, we're looking at the larger scope of this plan. I think that what is different in comparison to things that you've seen before is you have pockets of behaviors. But the connection of all of those behaviors for these two pilot schools and connected to EVAAS and evaluations and how people are collaborating in those schools, I think that that is very different, especially when you bring in the incentives. And so, as we get more granular and bring more of that information to you, I hope that that will become clearer. But I would say that this is different, very different when you're looking at these pilot sites.
Dr. LaSane, is this a model for what you may refer to, or some people may refer to as a pay-for-performance model?
Well, and we talked about that last week.
Okay.
And while I think that there are incentives connected to this, I don't think you just say that this is flat-out pay-for-performance because there are different measures. Pay-for-performance, when I hear that, I think, okay, at the end of the day, your EVA scores say this, or your end-of-grade, end-of-course tests say this. And so, if your kids meet that mark, then that's it. This is not just flat based on if your kids do this. There's a lot of other pieces that go into it.
But those pieces are part of it.
Those pieces are part of it.
So it's kind of a.
It's the combination.
Quasi-pay-for-performance plan. So the federal government, in other words, is endorsing a somewhat pay-for-performance plan?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation as presented, and that this approval does not supply any money or allocate any funding for this project. It is approval of the recommendation only. It is approval of the recommendation only. And that's what she's asking for, so I don't know if that's even necessary, but just to make that clear.
I think it makes it clear and it clarifies. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a motion, a second? Any further discussion? All, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did have one additional item on the agenda tonight, as Mr. Johnson mentioned before he left. As you know, we were faced with another day out of school last Friday because this winter does not seem to want to give up. So, we've got to make a decision about how to handle that day missed from school, so we'll call this Item E, School Calendar Modification. Dr. Hargrave.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Now that we have you all excited, we did meet this morning in cabinet, and cabinet consists of superintendent, the executive team, senior leadership, a principal representative from each level, to discuss how to handle the missing of last Friday. And we want to propose a recom, want to recommend that we move the workday, which is now scheduled on Good Friday, move that workday to this past Friday, okay? And then, turn Good Friday, which was, is now a workday, into a school day. Okay? Now, I know that we, we have discussed many times about how to deal with the calendar and how to deal with these inclement weather days that have caused us to miss more school days than we have in, in many years past. And, and remind you that we're not out of the woods yet when it comes to potential weather. As I have been looking, there is a possible system that is out there over the-
Blizzard, is that what, door?
Just know that it's out there, okay? And it does, it, it does have the potential. Now, I, I, I told the cabinet this morning, they're using the same words to describe this potential system that they used to describe the past one, and that is that it's not going to amount to anything. And we see what happened, okay? So, the, the drivers that we discussed this morning was to keep in mind the balancing of the two semesters. I think last semester was comprised of 89 days, and second semester is 91 days, and we're trying to keep that balance. The second thing that we discussed was the, the face time needed to get children prepared to take their exams. They need to be in front of the teachers getting that quality instruction in order to have preparation and get ready for the exam. And, and then, just the mere fact that we're still in winter, and even though spring is just around the corner, March is sometimes tricky. And, and there is the potential that we could deal with some more weather causing us to have to come back and have this conversation again.
Are you talking about the same day that's, that's listed on this sheet?
Excuse me?
Is he talking about the same day that's listed on this sheet? April the 18th?
Yeah.
But, you said, what'd you say, this Friday?
Good Friday.
Good Friday.
Yes, sir.
I thought you were talking about this week, and I thought, wait a minute, I'm confused. Good Friday, April the 18th.
Yes, sir.
I think one of the things that have dealt us a blow this year is we had agreed as a board at the beginning, you know, we're so limited by the calendar, we were going to try to use Saturdays when we had a four-day week so that we could still get the instructional time and eliminate overtime costs.
Mm-hmm.
But, it just hasn't worked to our benefit on the timing. So, it's, like I said, Sunday, it's a double-edged sword. We want to be cautious about just forgiving, forgiving and forgiving and giving up instructional time without seizing an opportunity to get this, these instructional hours in without overtime.
Right.
And so, the, the overtime is a big expensive issue. I've forgotten what you all told us that figure was for, to do it on a six-day week on a Saturday. What was that, a couple hundred thousand dollars?
I think that is correct. Is Melissa?
Huh?
About $150,000?
I thought it was close to a hundred, between $150,000 and $200,000.
It is a significant amount of money, yes.
It's an expensive day, so.
And also, as we have looked in the future for the rest of the, the weeks, we don't have a four-day week-
Yeah.
-that's on the calendar. So, any Saturday that we would use would put us in an overtime situation.
Yeah, I hate to get into religious holidays, but, I mean, I think it's a good recommendation.
Of course, the, the barrier that we discussed this morning was that, you know, any time that you change the calendar, and, and we're going, we're asking to utilize Good Friday, there's a potential that, you know, a lot of students may be absent. So, that was the, that was the, the barrier that we discussed. We do feel like, again, that the need and the drivers do outweigh that potential barrier that we know is there, and, and that the kids need this, this time, this quality time and instruction that they can get by having a school day.
We have those barriers on any of the, any of the choices that we have.
That's correct.
We go to Saturdays, we have that barrier. If we go into, uh, uh, spring break, we have that barrier. If we go the end of the year, we have that barrier. So, we have all of those, and it's almost the choice of the smallest evil, and since there's a week coming up after that particular Friday, that might be the best time.
Right.
And hope it doesn't blizzard again.
And is this a, is this a good time as well to discuss what we'll do for further snow makeup days? I mean, if we have a, if we have a snow makeup day, should we go ahead and, and vote whether or not we'll do a Saturday makeup in the event?
Well, that's like what we just had. We said we needed to make up a Saturday during the same week. Well, the day we were out was Friday, so it's hard to be out on Friday and announce that you're going to be there on Saturday. So, that was a barrier too, and we're running out of those, so this might be the choice, and we hope it doesn't happen again.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about in the event of future snow days. Like, if we, if we're out on a Wednesday, you know, should we go ahead and, and vote on that tonight, whether we will propose doing a Saturday makeup?
We don't re-agreed to do that at the beginning of the year.
That's, yeah, I think that's already been established.
Have we already done that?
The only thing was we couldn't do it.
Just couldn't get it in.
Couldn't do it on a Saturday because you couldn't pull it together, uh, Friday because you couldn't pull it together.
Okay, because I thought that that was, that was a question that was discussed, but I didn't remember it ever being voted.
I don't think there was a, I don't remember a vote, but I do remember the, the discussion and that you had given us that direction, that if we missed a day during the week, that we would utilize the, the Saturday. And as we have said, being out on Friday did not give us time to make preparations and to be able to put Saturday into play. But, moving forward, if we miss days this early in the week, it, it really makes sense for us to try to get it in on a Saturday, because we're, frankly, just running out of options.
I think for the benefit of the public here that might not understand the school calendar, we don't make the school calendar. Raleigh dictates it to us, and we have to try to find ways to massage it to make the instructional time happen, and it's, it's almost an impossible task.
It is, and when you consider the fact that we're locked in as to when we can start, and that school must be finished by a certain day, and you have to make everything work within those parameters, it's, it's tough.
It is, just about impossible.
With that being said, we need a motion to agree with the administration's recommendation to make this past Friday a teacher workday, and to make Good Friday a student attendance day.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, that concludes our non-consent agenda. We've come to time for a public comment. We did not have anyone sign the sheet to speak tonight. I'll ask for, if anyone would like to speak. Okay, now, let me start from the front of the room, if you will, you go ahead. And then, if you come, no, what I would like to do for those that are not attended before is we'll have the speaker, once you're recognized, come to the podium, state your name and the general subject that you're speaking about, and then, go ahead and make your comments to the board, trying to limit your comments to three minutes or less. And we will hear your comments, but as general principle, we do not respond back as a board to your comments. So, if you can come forward then.
My name is Tanya Reed, I'm the lead social worker for Iredell Statesville Schools. I don't have a speech that's polished tonight because, because I hadn't planned on speaking, but there were some comments and some responses to some questions that was made earlier that I'm like, I'm about to fall out of my seat. And I'm like, I cannot let you folks go home thinking what you're thinking and hearing the responses that you heard. I've been doing this for 14 years, and first of all, Dr. Cash, thank you for the opportunity, and board members, thank you for letting me stand here. I've been doing this for 14 years, and I love what I do. The body of people, the body of parents, students that we touch, is a small body within the population that we serve in Iredell Statesville Schools. If I could have a parent, I would love, first of all, I would love to have that position feel that's getting ready to become vacant and go away. Second of all, I would love to have parents come up here and tell you what we really do. You have no clue. Michelle Fries and myself, we bust butt. We make a difference. We make that kid who doesn't show up to be taught to make a difference in test scores, we make them come in and sit in that seat. We hold that parent's hand when they don't know how to advocate for their kid properly in the different things that they need to do to make sure their child is ready to learn, come into school ready to learn. We'll hold that parent's hand. We'll guide that parent. We will also pop that parent's hand when they don't do what they need to do, and the popping occurs because we enforce the school attendance law. The question that was made in the statements that was, excuse me, made in terms of DSS social workers and school social workers, they can't do what we do. We can't do what they do. There's been no conversation, and, and it kind of ruzzed me a little bit because those of us who do the work have never been able to come before you to say, this is what we do. But, thank goodness today I got a chance to stand up here, and I'm nervous, and, and speaking from my heart. But, at the same time, DSS deals with child abuse and neglect and abandonment. Michelle Fries and I don't do that. We deal with issues that hinder children from learning. That means if a parent's not doing their part, we kind of got to make that happen. If they don't come to school, we kind of got to make that happen. If that kid doesn't have eyeglasses to be able to see to perform well, we got to make that happen, whether they have Medicaid or we hit those funds that those two organizations gladly donate to us, that we really use up real well. That, so there's a lot of things, from mattresses, kids sleeping on floors. Our homeless population last year was 377. A lot of work Michelle Fries and I and Nancy, I share it also, do a lot of work with those folks to make sure that they feel like everybody else, and they can get to school and perform like everybody else without them knowing. So, I couldn't let you all go home tonight without saying, uh-uh, DSS can't do what we do. And we know we can't do what DSS does, but we do a good job for Iredell Statesville Schools, and even the parents that we pop their hands, they still love us anyway. I don't know what else to say, but it's just that I hope things are kind of clear, because I couldn't let you go home tonight with that thought. Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight, but I too can't let you go home without thinking about a few things that I heard tonight. I'm Christine Sefransky, I am an art teacher at Statesville High School. I have been teaching in this school district for 10 years. I would like to point out that my children, my personal children and my 200 children that I have in the school are not sausage. They are not some agencies write, or, or experiment. They are valuable, they are important, and there have been a set of standards that have been made over the history of education, since they were tiny little schoolhouses, that have worked and that have not worked. And some of those are Democratic ideas, and some of those are Republican ideas, and it's important that we all come to the table and discuss this. But, I do want to let you know that if you do not stand with us teachers, we will know it, and we will know it when you come together and you either stand with us like Gophers County stood up for their teachers, or not. We need you. We need you. NCAE is not just a political affiliation. NCAE is important. It's important because NCAE, I come from New York, NCAE is nothing compared to the tenure that you're talking about in New York that automatically rolls through your head, that, oh, this teacher can't be fired. I have seen teachers dismissed both, justifiably and not justifiably, and I've seen it happen, and it happens, okay? There might be numbers that you're looking at, but you don't know how many of those teachers just are dismissed based on other processes than the firing process. And most of those times have been for good. So, I don't think that you're seeing the full thing. I also don't see how, especially when I went through this myself, being a teacher, and I needed those first three years, and I needed a mentor, and I'm a mentor now, and I know that if it becomes teacher versus teacher, if you have me against those other people, sure, I want to help them, but I got to put my family first then at that point. And I hope that you'll think about that when you guys put this to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. My name is Helen Williams, and I'm from Lake Norman High School. I have been with Iredell Statesville for the last 27 years. I have been in the state of North Carolina for 27 and a half. And I will tell you right now, I started in a school system that did not care about its teachers. As soon as I moved to Iredell County, wow, 180. You care. You care what happens. But, when you tell me that you're going to look at politics and take away something from a teacher like me that I've earned, that breaks my heart. You're taking me away from my kids for some reason. My principal wakes up on the wrong side of the bed and doesn't like me anymore. It is possible under this current system to have teachers dismissed, but we deserve the right to be heard, and we deserve the right to understand why. And if you take Senate Bill 402, that takes us away from us completely. Thank you.
My name is Doug Holland. I'd like to speak on Making Proud Choices, and specifically, the, the Task Force application form. Dr. Cash, you're at the end of the public comment period at last month's school board meeting. You made the comment that the board was no way condoning that Ms. Rogers set up the task force. Ms. Bonham, you made the comment during the discussion phase that you couldn't support the task force unless other options were considered. I would like to read to you the, the first paragraph of the Task Force application form that Ms. Rogers has wrote up for the school system and has put on your website. The purpose of this task force is to review the Making Proud Choices curriculum and the requirements of North Carolina state law to determine if modifications are necessary in order to implement the evidence-based, proven-effective fourth edition of MPC into the ninth grade health- the ninth-grade health curriculum. Following the completion of an eight-hour MPC curriculum, this task force will discuss any adaption or modification needed to meet the community standard. Task force recommendations will then be brought before the school board of, the Board of Education. Dr. Cash, it's quite clear to me, the old adage that the fox is guarding the hen house. Ms. Rogers is the one setting up the task force. She is the one who put the application form out. She goes on to state that a four-to-six-month time period will be needed, nights and weekends. Also, she states that the task force will have to sit through an eight-hour Making Proud Choices curriculum. And also, she puts in there that we'll have to sign a confidentiality agreement. All of these are a problem for me, and I think it's up to, would be up to the task force to determine what, what is needed there. And as a, as a citizen, as a parent, I think it, that we do need to look at other options and not just MPC curriculum and how it, it needs to be changed to make, to be, to work for this county. We need to look at all the options out there, and I would strongly urge this board to consider those options and more or less do away with this application form. It's, I don't think it's fair to both sides. Thank you.
I will take a moment to respond. I know ordinarily we don't respond to these things, but I think this is a matter of clarification to the public. I don't really appreciate the idea of saying we have two sides, because that's not the way good business will be done. I think we need to have everyone coming in, not necessarily on a side, so that we can look and evaluate the program. I know that may have been a matter of semantics, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I would hope, and I think the board hopes, that we don't have people coming in representing sides of an issue. I think we need to look at the issue broadly and try to come up with a solution that's best for the students first and foremost. Second, the day after we met last month, I had a phone conversation, a conference call with Ms. Rogers, attended by Brady Johnson and Ron Hargrave, and I think one other person that I'm not remembering who now. But anyway, we had a conference call, and we specifically asked that group to design an application form so that we would be able to have a broad representation of the public apply. Because Ms. Rogers may have had something to do with the application form, does not necessarily imply that she's the one that's choosing the committee. As a board, we have not heard back how that committee will be chosen yet, but Mr. Johnson and Mr., and Dr. Hargrave were both involved in that discussion. And so, at a later time, again, it's not on the agenda tonight, but we probably will hear, as a board, we expect to hear back about how that process is, is taking place. But that's just, just a point of clarification there. Any other speakers? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman and Board, for allowing me to speak. My name is Michelle Fries. I'm the, pretty much the, Tanya and I are the last men, women standing for our school social workers. I wanted to make sure to clarify, our number-one job responsibility is attendance. That's what I am called in to do when I go in to speak and talk to families, go to the schools. I'm looking at attendance, is there children sitting in those classrooms? If there are not, I have Scotts, Third Creek, MB Mills, and Celeste Hinkle, and then I am the truancy court district liaison across the whole district for thirty-five schools where the assigned people come and talk to me, or we have meetings, I go visit the schools or determine which students have excessive unexcused absences. At that point, I try to help those workers build a court case to be able to go to truancy court, that if those children continue to miss school, the parents are willfully not sending their children to school, then we're moving towards district court to be in front of the judge so that the judge can order that child to be at school. I, there, you know, as far as DSS, they are looking at child neglect, safety issues. When it comes to educational neglect, they put it right back to the school, which is Tanya and I at this point, when there was at one point five of us, now there's just two, or will be next year. And it's tremendously, I've saw, seen the attendance totals, the absences are getting higher and higher. And, and you know, there's, there's the average daily attendance totals that come into play that sends school to this district if there's two students sitting in that classroom for that day. And if they're not, I think that's tied to the money part. So, at this point, we're not near as effective, we're stressed, we're stretched thin, we're doing the best we can to get those students sitting in that classroom. And just as an example, at Scotts Elementary, just four weeks ago, I'd went looking for another child that was coming from East, that she and I had communicated, that had been out of school for two or three weeks. Mom hadn't enrolled him at Scotts. I went to inquire. My data manager, enrollment person was telling me, well, I think that this is this student. Well, call this landlord. Well, I called the landlord for the trailer park off of Midway. Well, she was indicating that was Hispanic family, not her family. And when I went out to, she told me the address, the landlord did, went and knocked on the door. The whole family came to the door. Mom has six children, a second grader, a four-year-old, three-year-old, two-year-old, two-year-old, and twins that were just born in November. She's all alone, no transportation, and this second grader has, came from Catawba County and, and had not been in school all this school year. She did not go August, September, October, November, December, January, and first two weeks of February. I got her enrolled within two days. I took the paperwork out for enrollment packet from Scotts, helped mom fill it out, got it back to the school, got bus transportation figured out, and got that child enrolled and sitting in that classroom. That's my job. So, it really is hurting this county and this school district by not having these people in place to help get these kids sitting in the classroom. So, I thank y'all for listening.
Thank you. Well, I've been asked by one of my fellow board members to make a comment. We won't veer from the response back too much tonight, but since we do seem to hear quite a bit from social workers, I think the board does understand, it's one of these matters, I believe, that you may be preaching to the choir. I know comments were back out of some, what made on emotion by some of us as well, because we're passionate about this too. These are hard decisions to make when we face budget time. We do understand and have actually sat in meetings with commissioners and expressed the differences that our social worker in the school system plays that's entirely different from the social workers in the DSS department, because that exact question has come up to us when we present budget requests and are discussing our school budget issues with the county commissioners. Some of those commissioners don't seem to understand the difference. And so, I think that, let's just remember that we are all on the same team, you know, with you all as well, and we'll continue to work as hard as we can, given the constraints of some of these budget difficulties that we have. But we certainly hear the comments you make, and Mr. Kelly wanted me to make sure that you all were aware of that. So, we continue to work, and we continue to fight that fight. But part of this is, we appreciate you all educating us with your comments, but at the same time, you know, there's more education that needs to go on in other go, other governmental bodies as well, and we continue to try to play that role as much as we can. But we have limitations too, so, but we can, but we continue to fight that fight for you. Anyone else wish to speak? Well, thank you for the comments. We, we do take those seriously and continue to listen, and we're ultimately trying to do the best job we can to represent everyone, and especially remembering the, the interest of the students primarily. Again, as you've noticed, Mr. Johnson had to leave for another commitment, so unless Dr. Hargrave would like to step in his place and make any superintendent comments, I'll give you that option if you'd like.
I think enough's been said.
Okay. Enough words been said. These lights are getting very hot up here, I have to admit. So, at that point, we'll go ahead and plan to adjourn this meeting. Before we do, I will make some announcements of upcoming dates that are on your agenda, but just so they're voiced here. March nineteenth, Early Release Professional Development Day. March twenty-eighth will be a snow makeup day. April seventh will be our next committee of the whole meeting at the ADR Education Center at five P.M. And April fourteenth will be our next Board of Education meeting here at the Arido Government Center at six P.M. Yes, this Saturday, one thing not on here, there is a public political forum with some educational topics to be discussed over at State School High School. It, from nine A.M. to about eleven A.M. And it's, I guess, the third year that we've done something similar, where our public elected officials at the state level and local level are invited to attend as well. With that said, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
Second, hold in favor. Thank you all for attending us.